Disgusting, Tom, take it away. I do want to note Commissioner Blue Balls online. He's joining us online. Can't see him because we have the presentation up. But so Commissioner, if you have anything to interject, just we may not be able to see you. So just go ahead and unmute yourself and get our attention. We'll make sure we get you honored.
Okay, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Good morning, Chairman and Commission. Today, just one topic to talk about, but it's a it's a heavy lift. This is a discussion of our juvenile services building plan. And Steve and Mario and Andrew Dilt will all at some point talk today, I'm sure. I want to have Steve just kind of go through the history of kind of how we've got to the to the day today. And then have Andrew get into some depth about two options on the build. And we could talk about some operational things and then Commission, of course, can ask questions. So Steve, I think you will start us off, sir.
Steve, good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Steve Stonehouse with the Department of Corrections. And I'm going to go through exactly what we're talking about. And then you'll hear the technical stuff from Andrew. So the we're talking about all juvenile services that are not related to detention. So juvenile detention and juvenile intake and assessment are not part of this proposal. We're talking about a proposal to bring juvenile field services, which contains intensive supervision, probation and home base services. And the evening reporting center and the juvenile residential facility into one location. The juvenile field services started formerly in Cedric County in 1998 with the one of the first waves of juvenile justice reform. Since that time, we've been in four different locations. We've been displaced the first time because our practice business changed. We had to start offering groups and interact with our clients differently than just a straight supervision model. So that was in about 2005, 2006. Then we went to the Harry Street Mall. We had a built to suit area that was perfect. It gave us what we needed. There was another wave of juvenile justice reform, and we were able to remodel that space to contain our evening reporting center. So as the out of home placements went away, then we went to an evening reporting center model where there was a school and then programs for kids between the hours of 10:00 in the morning until 8:00 o'clock at night. And that was at the Harry Street Mall. And we've lost that lease. We went to another part of the Harry Street Mall, and then we lost that lease. And the Evening Reporting Center took over a dorm at the juvenile residential facility, and it's operating out of there. And juvenile field services and home base are in the Munger Building right now. So that's how we have JFS split up. And the juvenile residential facility has been in operation since 1994. Since that time, it's operated as an alternative to detention. So kids who would otherwise be in detention, who the court has determined they're not ready to go home yet, but they can go to a community based program, attend school in their in their community, at their base school or at school at the shelter can go over there. Today, their population is 16. It could be 25, but we've have to use it for the Union Reporting Center. It's licensed by DCF, and we serve outside our main population. We serve crossover youth, so kids who are child in need of care and juvenile offenders can go over there. And as well as police protective custody, who the children's home have turned down probably because of behavior or runaway. They can also be served there. Having a fluid environment like that causes us to always save one bed. It's inefficient, but it's better than having somebody spend the night in an office like at JAC. So we always save one bed. And DCF does reimburse us for those kids. We started having concerns about JRF probably seven or eight years ago. Just the the functional layout is not very good. There's no waiting room. There's no rooms to meet with workers or therapists because the kids have changed. There's more services that come with with the kids at JRF than we used to have before. So we started talking about remodel project. At the same time, we got noticed that JFS was losing their lease the first time. So then this idea of having a consolidated campus came up, and that's what we've been working on. JRF has several concerns about. There's been several additions to it. So it really makes for an unsafe environment the way you have to get back to the the classroom and the gym. You have to walk through a dorm and down a hallway and through some locked doors. So there are real safety concerns about that building. There are also some code enforcement issues. The HVAC has been on its last legs for a while now. And the design just is not does not help with the way we have to staff our building to be as efficient as we can. When you have to have a ratio, if you have a building that's very chopped up like that, then it's very inefficient. You have to have extra staff on just to handle a small number of kids. So what you're going to hear today is two solutions. One is a hybrid remodel, and one is a demolition and new build. So before we get started, any questions on the history of how we got here or where we're at?
You might just update the Harry Street. Are we when are we out of that building or are we completely out of that? I know there was a transition happening. Are we completely out of that now?
I think we're out.
Completely.
Yes. The
Where is where are field services happening now?
Munger Building.
We're over at Munger.
Yes, we're very happy to be there. It's a very nice building. We got a nice remodel, but it's not ideal for kids and families.
Okay.
But it's it's we've made it functional.
Okay.
Make it work. The the plan is if we go forward with one of these options, that ERC will have to move over there as well because JRF is going to be uninhabitable at some point, either remodel or demolition. So ERC is going to have to go over there, too. And we have there's room for it.
Thank you.
Only mention on say on Harry Street is offender registration unit just came out of Harry Street in December. So that's out. And then we still have a common care lease at Kermit Street. So services are on, so.
Okay, thanks.
I will try not to repeat everything that Steve said, but there is some duplicate information here. So I may just run through this real quick. To elaborate on some of the history, JFS and Home Base Services previously leased space at Harry Street Mall. We did not renew. Landlord decided not to renew, so we had to we had to vacate. And there were some remodel costs at Munger. You know, basically every time they move, we incur some some cost, move cost, remodel cost, furniture cost. JFS currently 100% out of Munger. Home Base Services has been absorbed in the county facilities while we also relocated DOC staff to Ark Valley Lodge. Juvenile residential facility is located down there on the JDF campus. So it is basically sandwiched between JDF, JAC, Juvenile Courts and Juvenile DA. And we kind of have a campus theme, if you will, going at that location right now. This new building will combine JRF, JFS, Home Base Services and ERC to really make the whole campus just that juvenile campus and not have any any other juvenile services anywhere else in the in the city or the county. The efficiencies we're going to gain or we're going to we're merging these four programs together under one roof, which will allow for efficient staffing and coordination between clients and between programs. It also allows all four programs to share resources such as conference rooms, workspaces, restrooms and lobby space. The Cedric County clients and families also benefit from this campus setting. Here is a bird's eye view of the site that we're dealing with on the left. We have the red outline. That's basically the limits of our construction. On the right, we have a street view of the current facility. It's basically CMU wall with residential style roof. It's a it's a gable roof. And so right now, we kind of have there's no room for HVAC equipment in this in this current footprint. So the the units that we do have are just basically crammed into the attic between the trusses. Really kind of makes it difficult. Steve spoke to a previous CIP that we had for HVAC improvements. That is something that we're going to have to look at, whether we do a remodel or we completely demo and rebuild, we'll have a new HVAC system in that. But that is something that we're going to have to evaluate as we as we continue having this discussion. Currently, we already have a an approved CIP for a new construction, new building. In 2024, we had the design approved for just over 2 million. In 2025, we had construction approved for just over 20 million. It consists of a two story building just shy of 50,000 square feet. And we would demo the existing juvenile residential facility. Below here is a rendering of what the new building would look like. We have a single entrance, a single lobby. It's a two story building on the front, and it it goes to a single story on the back. Here is a floor plan of that site. You can see kind of off to the right that that green area, that's the second story. It would just be for personnel only. There would no there would not be any clients that go up to the second story. The first floor would basically just be for clients and and as well as the staff that oversee the clients. But you have the different programs there. They're all color coded. And then looking at a remodel, again, we already have the 2 million approved for design in 2024. Nothing's really happened with the design. We're kind of waiting on direction on whether or not we're going to proceed with the current approved CIP or if we're going to go back and change this to to remodel. If we did do a remodel, our construction budget would would be just over 16 million. Again, it's a little bit less square feet. We would we would have basically five building additions on this. We'd have two additions to expand the dorms, one addition to expand offices and lobby. This basically create two two lobbies for the entire facility. We would also have an addition for the laundry room and addition for the two floors that provide space for JFS and Home Base Services. Again, I already already kind of spoke to the HVAC replacement. We're limited on space in the existing building, which is something we're going to have to work with the architect and engineer to try to figure out. Another thing that that I don't have in this PowerPoint that has recently service surfaced in the construction world are the the talks of the tariffs. So we really kind of want to hopefully get a decision soon on what direction we're going because the cost of construction is not getting cheaper. It continues to to go up. And there's a lot of rumblings in the construction world regarding the tariffs and the cost of construction. Here's a rendering of what it would look like during the remodel portion. The the gable roof there is expanded, and then you can see all the flat roof that is also new new construction. The blue awning are the two lobbies that we would have to the two separate. I mean, they're connected, but they're they're basically two separate buildings. Here's a floor plan of what that would look like. So the yellow is existing today. The blue is all the additions. Yes, sorry. And the second floor is new. The second floor is is off to the right again, and it would be positioned back here on the new construction portion. It's it's not feasible to build a second story on top of the existing facility that we have now.
That's why I call it a hybrid model because it it preserves.
The the task was to preserve JRF and build around it. But there was no way for them to the architect to have juvenile field services fitting without going to a second floor. So that's why they were doing it that way. So for these reasons that are listed and more, I'm recommending that we go with a new build. And I say that realizing the cost is shocking how much a new building costs right now. But when we look at the efficiencies of or excuse me, this building, the remodel building still brings some of the inefficiencies that are concerning that we have with today's model. And basically, you have that 30 year old building in the middle with two lobbies that we now have to staff. And that's what we staff today, just on different parts of Wichita. So that's a significant staff expense, having two different lobbies. And then the connections between everything in white still doesn't integrate the building into one one program. It's still you have these hallways to get places, and that's just not as as integrated as as we would like to have gone to this expense and time to get something that's that's newer and marginally better, but it still doesn't fix all the the problems. Feel like the new design gives us the one lobby allows staff to be cross functional much easier with the shared space. Eternal external access for grassroots organizations.
We have already started with grassroots organization asking you use our space to to meet in to meet in our building. And this new building allowed for that right here without even going into JRF. So staff can we can approve a a provider to come in with their staff and meet with clients without even interacting with our licensed facility. So we won't have that concern as if with this building. I don't know exactly where to put them and how to get them there without having contact with the yellow piece, which is JRF. So once you start interacting with kids in a licensed facility, there's background checks, there's fingerprints and things like that. So I mean, we're going to do it. I'm not saying it's impossible. It's just an added step that that we wouldn't have under the new building.
I think that the new building also allows possibility for expansion. That's something that we asked for. So if our business changes, our business has changed in 30 years. If it changes 30 years from now, there is space for expansion. And that's something you wouldn't have in the new building with a hybrid model. And I think overall, in general, the lifespan is going to be longer with a new build as compared to the hybrid with the old middle and the new outer buildings. So we've talked quite a bit about efficiencies that are going to be gained for staff and families by just coming to one campus. So I think that that remains. There any questions? I'd be happy to have them.
I've got a few, and I'm sure there are a few. And again, Commissioner Blue Ball, though he can't see you, so just unmute yourself if you've got some questions and insert yourself in the conversation anytime. Steve, Mario, this might even be some questions for Rusty and Tom, too. We talked about the safety concerns in JRF now, and that's a motivating factor. Aside from losing leases and we're having services spread across the community, can you better help me understand the safety concerns and what liability we have if we don't correct these safety concerns?
The biggest safety concern is in this in the current building and even the hybrid. There is can't see, but there's a gym in the back where it's completely separated from the rest of the building. So if an emergency would have to happen in the school or the gym, and we're waiting for somebody to come from the different part of the building, there's going to be significant time for that emergency to be happening and no way for easy access. What is happening in the back area? I think that that continues in the hybrid model because we have these disparate buildings that are not really connected otherwise by a long skinny hallway. So you have people rushing to get one place. It's just not open with no clean line of sight that we envisioned in the new building.
Okay. Okay, that helps me understand the obviously we're talking solid campus for visitors and guests, cross functional staff. So we'll find some efficiencies there. I want to understand. I want to talk about being preventative instead of reactive in some of these things, particularly with these kids that are that are involved in our system. Did you are we going to have better outcomes for kids? I know you can't qualify or quantify that, but the motivating factor for me on an investment of this magnitude side of the safety concerns is I want to understand that there's going to be some better outcomes for kids because we can serve them better. I can you help us understand that?
I think the first thing that comes to mind is was the request to allow grassroots and outside organizations. That came from stakeholders. That came from the Board of County Commissioners, and that also came from the task force to looking into the death of Cedric Lofton. They wanted to be more involved in our services. And this would allow for them to serve kids in our building without us doing it.
Can you explain why that why I we need to understand why that it's different now? It would be different then than it is now.
Well, the way it would be is that they could reserve space, much like you do at Cedric County Park, if you want to use a building. And they could have independent space that we don't have to staff or monitor. And right now, that's not the case because the they would the vendors who are who would want to come in right now, there would not be designated space, not be designated entrance and exit. And we would basically have to do all the the background checks on them. That many grassroots organizations use or utilize folks who have a passion for this work and oftentimes have lived experience in the juvenile and adult justice system. That mostly precludes them from being in a licensed facility, and we're not able to overcome that. We had not been able to overcome.
This will help us overcome and engage these grassroots organizations.
Yes, this also allows meeting spaces for clients and families. Right now, they meet in an open just open room. This has private areas to do that in and allows supervision as a whole without dedicating one staff. So right now, if you move a client to a separate area, you have still have to have eyes on that individual. So you take away a staff to do that. This allows a more more clean lines of sight. So you can meet with your family over here in an observation area, and I don't have to have a staff dedicated to that. They can also do their job over here with with the the rest of the kids.
Sure, okay. I guess my last question for now is, Lindsey, can you talk about how we're funding this?
Sure. So it's in the CIP that's been approved already. It's a total of just about $22 million. We had $2 million in last year's CIP for the design, and we have 20 million for the construction in this piece. There's already been a project authorization done by the commission to allow reimbursement of bond proceeds for actual costs. So it's been built into every financial forecast that you've seen since then. And again, recall, we've got that $3 million for NCAT debt service that falls out of the forecast starting in 2029. And we are looking to to replace that with responsible debt so that you can have a relatively flat mill levy rate in that fund so that there's never a position where the commission has to come in and actually increase the mill levy in order to to pay for, excuse me, to pay for projects.
That's helpful. Okay, other questions or Andrew?
There's one thing that I want to mention. We there's one shortcoming that we have with the remodel, and I can't speak to very much details. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but there's a potential for the licensing component to go away with the remodel portion. So the right now, we are licensed by DCF. And there is a proposal that KDOC would would become the regulatory agency. And the number of of narrow hallways, I believe, would be a possible sticking point for KDOC to license a facility, just given the the risk factors of separating their population that much and not being able to quickly respond to. DCF and KDOC would be looking at very different things when it comes to licensing.
Okay.
But that that is a a concern that with some proposed changes, if if we would change regulators, that that could be a problem for licensing.
It's helpful to understand that. Other questions? Commissioner?
Good, Chairman, just a couple of quick quick questions. Is this the first time we've seen this to be a two story facility?
We've seen the the new build. This is the first, I believe this is the first time they're seeing you are seeing the hybrid facility.
Second time. They saw it saw briefly at the retreat.
Okay.
The new build, we have talked about, this is at least the fifth time through the second county commission that we've talked about the new build. And and you've seen the two story original design. Andrew may want to slightly correct me, but that's that's my recollection on the number of presentations we've done.
Yeah, so to follow that up, we we've presented this multiple times, going back and forth between a remodel component versus the new addition. Back when before the CIP was approved, that's that's basically when we were having these discussions. Since then, we have tried to modify the remodel component to make it make as many improvements and capture as many deficiencies that we that we could with that remodel so that we can we can hopefully run a successful program as much as possible with the the remodel component. I mean, ideally, you know, there's there's a number of benefits that we see with the new new build. We the existing JRF building, it's it's only 40 years old. It's not it's not an ancient building by any means. But we're basically, this is a huge capital investment that we're putting into this, and that's going to be at the center of it. And so we're not looking to move those walls that are existing within that remodel component. We're trying to make make use of them as much as possible, but it creates those operational inefficiencies for DOC staff and clientele when they're trying to to coordinate between those programs.
And yes, not this not this drunk. Can you go back to the hybrid, please? So just curiously, the the yellow is existing. It looks to me like there's more blue than yellow. And so still set essentially mostly a new building. I mean, it's retaining a very small amount. I mean, the gymnasium is one large big space, but really you look at the rest of the building that's being retained, it's really not very much. There's go ahead.
So I'll I'll walk you through this real quick. So the you're right, the yellow is existing today. I believe right here is the lobby of today's building. We would basically expand to the lobby right now is too small. So we would expand that lobby with a waiting area out here, and we would also add additional offices here as part of that addition. This addition to the north and the addition to the south are expanding the two dorms. So what we're trying to do is basically have eight beds per wing. So each wing is identical for how many beds they have for the the DOC staff. This expansion here would be for the laundry expansion for the additional beds. And then we have this component here, which would tie the old building to the new infrastructure. This is the outdoor playground. We moved the the classroom up here to try to shorten the length of the hallways as much as possible so that DOC staff can respond if there's an emergency or a safety concern. And then we have the two story component here that would be for the additional programs that we're moving on site.
And this is considered a non secure facility, correct?
Yes.
Non secure. Yeah, so
It'd be locked from the outside at night.
So I mean, people can't just walk in. I get that, but these kids are not.
No, they're not.
Not a sentence to be here like they are JDF.
No.
And so with that in mind, how much how much do do staff go between the juvenile DA, juvenile courts and juvenile detention and JAC? How much does staff from those four agencies go to this facility?
I can speak for maintenance staff, and it's constant. As far as DOC staff, I'll I'll look at DOC.
I would say daily on a regular basis because we have our administrator for juvenile field services. He also oversees the juvenile residential facility. And so he's constantly going back and forth between the Munger Building and the current JRF facility.
So supervisor?
The supervisor, and then also the intensive supervised officers. They go over to juvenile court on a daily basis, meet with judges, meet with DAs and court services. So we're constantly reimbursing that from
Okay.
This with the with the new build, it's all essentially one building. They're already going to the programming. JRF has the opportunities. Those those clients have the opportunity to go to the Evening Reporting Center. So having them in one location, not chopped up, would be able to utilize those.
ISOs are in the office in that of this building?
Correct.
They're in the
The white, the white thing to the right is the second floor. That's where the ISOs are.
Where are they? Where are they now?
Munger.
ISOs are Munger.
Yes.
Correct. Curiously, just remind me, how do we how do we arrive at $2,66,000, $1,150? How how was that derived? It's the same number for both designs. I'm just curious.
So that was based on new construction. We did not, because it's already an approved budget item in 2024, we already have that money sitting there. We didn't change that number for depending on the route that we're going because it's already been approved.
And this is still largely unspent at this point. These are all conceptual ideas or not.
Correct, yeah. So if if we start getting into the details as far as how the the construction, the design goes, I'm not going to be able to speak to that very only at a high level because we haven't gotten into that.
I don't know. I don't know the 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 business very well, but is that is that a reasonable number for this size of a project? I mean, $2 million of design work for $16 million building seems a little high to me.
I I believe it is a little high. When we're setting these numbers, we're trying to be as accurate as we can, but we we don't want to come in and pitch you a number and then have to come back and ask for more money. So we're it's a budget number, and we're hoping that that we come in under.
Yeah, so if I can speak to that, Commissioner, when we do projects, we do them in one grand total. One of the things that we have received feedback from our municipal advisor and bond counsel on in recent years is that we in our planning, we need to be more deliberate about where we at where and when we actually plan to spend the money. And so what you've seen is a shift over the last few years where now you're going to see that design portion in year one and then the actual construction cost in year two or year three, because that's then when we intend to issue the bonds at the end of the project and reimburse ourselves. And our municipal advisor wasn't confident that we were being entirely transparent about that by putting all of And our municipal advisor wasn't confident that we were being entirely transparent about that by putting all of the costs in one year. So we've basically been taking roughly 10% of the project costs and putting it in year one to make sure that there is adequate funding there. Well, budget authority, and then we reimburse ourselves at the end. So that's really more of a technical issue from the finance side, not so much a project management issue, if that makes any sense.
And, and that's not all just design fees. We have plan review fees and we have other things built into that numbers that we can have drawings that have gone through MABCD. And they are ready to bid at the end of that first year.
And again, this looks like it's a brick and mortar facility. It's, it's not, uh, I mean, I would consider this to be a fairly expensive type of construction.
I, again, at a very high level, um, I think this is going to be a red iron building. And then we'll have, um, some sort of decorative facade on the outside to, to make it more appealing and, and match the adjacent buildings that we have on campus.
I think I have two questions for Steve and then maybe a comment. So I, I, I don't like, I have no questions for you, I don't think. But Steve, you mentioned a minute ago, something about Cedric Lofton, how that tied into this whole discussion. Please explain that again.
So the, one of the final recommendations from the task force was to have an increased participation from grassroots organizations in our granting or in our program delivery.
Okay. And I agree with that generally. I think that again, more programming is really my heart. I want safety and security. I want a positive environment and I want the programming. I want the community to be involved. So those are all my personal goals on how we would do it. To me, the facility is a, is a how to do it. But the, the, the purpose of the facility is to deliver those types of services. So I agree with that. It is interesting to me that Cedric Lofton got so far off the actual account of what happened with Cedric Lofton to that comment. I, I don't disagree with the comment, but I mean, what happened to Cedric Lofton was at JAC. We're not changing JAC. Right? That's the policies and procedures issues at JAC, training at JAC. It's not really part of the comment that you just made is, is, is great comment, but it has nothing to do with Cedric Lofton. Then I guess also, um, as you were talking, you talked about the, the four options we've had, the four places we've been in, in your comment, you, under your breath, you said, when we were at Harry Street Mall, it was perfect. That's the word you used. It was perfect. I, I, I agree. That was, there are some reasons why I don't really want. I, I, I think that ideally I would like to find a, if I could, if I could, um, somehow get my heart to desire here. I would find an existing building in a neighborhood that wasn't right next to the courts, right next to the DA, right next to JAC, right next to JDF. And this neighborhood is not, again, not, it's a non-secure facility. The kids walking in this neighborhood is not a great neighborhood for these kids to be in. And I, I'm a little concerned about making it good for us, but not good for them. And I, I'm a little, I, to me, this is not the ideal location. Um, I continue to say that. I know this is a lot of money. I'm willing, I'm willing to, to spend money for the right place. I think the leases have been the problem all along. We've, we, and I, I don't want to do a lease again because it puts us in a bad position. And you remodel the building to make it perfect. And next thing you know, you're kicked back out again. And I, I, I really appreciate the owner of that facility. He's a great guy. But we, we found the perfect place. And next thing we, we have to go back out again. I don't like us being down in Munger. I don't think that's a great location for our kids either. And so I mean, to me, it's a, it's a Band-Aid solution to a long-term vision to have it, the right facility. And I don't know that I'm willing to concede yet that this is the right location because it's good for us. And I don't know that, again, for this much money, I want to make sure we have the best location. And I don't know that this is, in my personal opinion, the best location. Um, I, I mean, I don't know if this is even a deal or not, but which does get ready to close a whole bunch of schools, for example. That might be another example where we might look at one of those buildings and see if one of those buildings would work for us. I don't even know if that has, I have no idea if that's even an opportunity. But, but there are facilities around the county that I think are available that could be, could be, you know, purchased and would be reasonably good for our, our needs. I mean, they're, they're good for kids today because the kids are in school today. But, uh, and I, you know, this other issue, you mentioned HVAC. To me, that comes back down to maintenance, you know, whether, you know, I notice that it's a good timing now. I don't want to buy a brand new HVAC for a building. We're thinking we might be bulldozing here a little bit. That's, that is smart, but that's not a reason to bulldoze it. So if we were to keep this building and have to update the HVAC, to me, that's, that's just maintenance. We're signed up to take care of roofs and, and HVAC and that type of thing. So it is great to, to not buy brand new stuff if you know you're not going to use it down the road. If you have a plan that may be questioning that, but ultimately that's not a reason to do this is all I'm trying to say. Anyway, um, my heart for these kids, I want to make sure we have the programming. That's me, that's me. The number one thing is having a facility that's positive. And what I'm not sure I'm for here is the level of money we're spending is, is a concern. But I also, I, my biggest concern right here is the, is the location. And I don't know that I'm agreeing that that's the best location for these kids, but it's just, I might be the only one that believes that, but.
You talked about the program. I just want to, so right now we're working with One Heart to, to co-locate at juvenile residential facility. Mario is just in the beginning stages of that, but the, the amount of, so basically we're trying to shoehorn them in the yellow area right now, and we're going to do it. They're gonna, we're gonna get there. But it's not going to be, it's not made for that. The new building would be made with that in mind. So I mean, that, that's been something that, because we've told people, we come to our place. We want you to, someone took a stop on it and we're trying to do it. So.
I would, I would just add to that, that the business as we see it today is much different than it was in 1994. In 1994, we were simply trying to prevent overcrowding at the juvenile detention facility because we were sending kids out of county. And they weren't receiving any type of programming at the juvenile residential facility. It's specifically to house kids to keep them in the county without any programming. Right now we're partnering with various community partners, as Steve mentioned. Um, they come in, they provide programming, not only in the juvenile detention facility, but also evening reporting center as well as the juvenile residential facility. And while we don't have capacity to do that, we're making, and we're making it work essentially. We don't have the best spaces to meet with clients, um, and to engage youth and families. So with, with the remodel or a new build, it, it adds those options to us and creates, creates a, uh, increased capacity overall for clients and families we serve.
That's smart. Russell?
I would just say, the space down on Harry Street was good. It was custom-built for all intents and purposes to, to fit the programs that they needed to run. And it was, it was good as long as it lasted, but the opportunity for WSU to take that space was more compelling than juvenile program. So we lost that space. Couple of years ago, this came up, or within the last year and a half, this came up about safety and security and, and looking at crime statistics down on Harry Street, around the Harry Street Mall. Looking at crime statistics down around where the juvenile campus is, uh, the number of crimes in a given timeframe were greater down on Harry Street with all the commercial properties and residential properties to the south than it is down in the neighborhood where the campus is currently located. The number of times that they've had incidents on campus or can count on one hand, are very seldom. There may be things off in the neighborhood that they killed, very seldom affect the facility down there. So I just don't want to get the impression that staff or clients are unsafe whenever they enter that campus because I don't think we have any, any statistics or history to support that.
I would just say that I'm supportive of this. This is an investment. It's a big investment, but I'm supportive of it for a variety of reasons. I guess I, I do see, I hear what Commissioner House is saying, but I, I think there are some significant efficiencies to be gained by consolidating the campus. You're already picking staff from Munger to JRF back and forth. At least have some cross-functional staffing. I think there's efficiencies to be gained there. But again, I, I, what Mario, what you just said really resonated that the model that we're conducting here has changed a lot over 30 years. And I, I'm desperate to get preventative in some of these measures with these kids. I mean, I think we're, it's desperate. And the reason I'm supporting this investment is because I truly believe that if we engage the community partners in a bigger way, that we'll have better outcomes. I'm banking on it, uh, that we'll have that. So just like Commissioner House said, who's deeply involved in these spaces. This is about services and programming for us. So the building is going to be designed in a way to where we can engage services, programming and community, community partners better than what we do now. With the investment being we'll have better outcomes in the future for these kids and prevent dangerous trajectories that they'll continue into our, into our system. So I'm, I'm been supportive from the jump. I think I'm more supportive today than I am now. I know there was a lot of discussions that, you know, we have an admin building coming and things like that. And we, I'd rather office out of a closet if it meant we can get better services for these kids, frankly. That's just how important I think this is for our community, but I, I won't make anybody else office in a closet with me. I just think that's how big, uh, this investment is and how much it means to the community and the trajectory we were going. So I appreciate the work that's been done. What do you need from us now in regards to new build or renovation? What's the timing of this? I, I guess we need to know direction from the commission, what, what decisions and what time, the timing I'm making these decisions. I know we're already in the CIP. We've already allocated money.
Yeah. So if, if there's no concerns on the, from the commission and on us proceeding forward as it stands today with new construction, then we'll press on. We just put everything on hold last year at budget retreat when, when we heard some, um, some concern on whether or not we had thoroughly, thoroughly evaluated the remodel component.
For corrections, the next step would be Mario would have to plan for, the kids are at JRF today. Or we've been told we can't return in detention. So he's got a plan for that. And he'll have to move our seat to Munger and then he'll have to get new licensing approved. And, um, once we have technical drawings, so he'll have a, he has a lot to do. Mario's got to get busy.
Our, Mr. Mycher?
We are probably regarding the timing component, we're probably at least a year away from having drawings that are ready to bid, um, or having contractor ready. So that would give Mario a year and, and we have a really good project manager on this one that will be coordinating with DOC along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the update presentation. I, I was agreeing with the question on timing. So I was kind of hoping in here would be a quasi Gantt chart of the timing, but you're explaining it. So does this come, does this come formally in front of the commission for a vote to go?
So this has already been approved budget-wise. The next time it'll come back before you, uh, would potentially be for a design, um, to hire the, the architect. I can't remember if that component's already passed or not, um, but then it'll come back before you again to hire a GC.
Okay. So we're talking, what you're saying to, to formally sign a deal and, and get going is still maybe a year out?
As far as hiring a GC, that is correct.
I mean, the project's approved and, and we've told bond council and we've told credit rating agencies that you, your favorite word, I know. Uh, we've told them that this is coming. So, uh, yeah, there's no more official action from the commission. I think Andrew just needed the direction on whether to go new bottle, new model route, new model, new build or remodel. Pretend I can talk. And based on that, if the commission doesn't say to change, then he will head in the direction of new build and that will leave the CIP unaffected.
Okay. Well, I was, uh, I think when we first saw this vision, I think we're still in the old offices. And I remember having a little bit of an, oh my gosh, feeling thinking, wow. I was thinking other projects and then thinking like 20 million ish towards this was hard for me to get my hands around. But, but over time and, and the thorough, uh, what you've done and, and the reasoning and, and the influence on, on juveniles is, I, I, I totally agree with the chairman. That, that is, if I was ranking projects, this one is way more important than, than having the, having the chair have a, have a Taj Mahal office in his, with, with a 95 inch big screen, all that stuff. So.
Sure.
No, but, uh, I am very supportive of this. So thanks for all the hard work.
Can we go back and look at the, uh, the hybrid plan again, please?
That is, that is.
The, the, the aerial view that's kind of looking down at that one. Where's the lobby on that? Public interest. Is that where that blue stripe is on the?
Yeah, there's two of them. So the blue stripe is basically the awning, um, that would be out in front of the lobby.
So we're on the right-hand side. That's the, or the.
We have one here.
That's where the residential, that's where the, uh, dormitory ish.
Yep. And then that would be the lobby to the new two-story building.
So for example, those folks are doing the, the programming from the community, they would enter through that secondary over on the right, over on the right side. Is that for the grassroots?
Yeah. It could, they could, yes.
I would assume, I, I mean, one of the problems with this current building is the, you know, when you walk through the dormitory to get to anything, you know, or that, you don't want that to happen. So unless they're going to the dormitory and the reason to go through that entrance on the, on the lower left side of the building. You, the, everybody else would be going through the upper lobby, correct?
They could go through the unlicensed section, which is juvenile field services piece or through the gymnasium entrance.
There are other doors on the facility, not necessarily with the lobby.
Well, I'll just tell you, um, again, if I, I concede my concerns about location. Again, that, you know, I think that's one of my bigger concerns. Fundamentally bulldozing buildings is, is a bad image for this community. I don't, I think when people say the building's 40 years old and we're going to bulldoze it, replace it with another building. I, I think that just, our taxpayers are tired of what they consider, consider being wasteful spending and wasteful management of, of taxpayer-owned buildings. And so I, I know it would probably be a preference by everybody. If money was an object, then the more expensive option would be the choice without question. But I don't want our taxpayers to think we're being wasteful. And there's about a three and a half million dollar difference in these two options. And again, if some of that $2 million is not used on the $16 million version, it may be more than three and a half million dollars saved. So between the two versions, I would probably be supportive of the lesser expensive option. Yeah, we don't have a, a rendering and that's, it's a rendering, but we don't have a similar rendering. We see a, uh, a ground view, if you will, of the more expensive version. We don't have that ground view of this, uh, in our packet. But to me, it's, it's still a, it, it looks like it's a refreshed building. It does meet all of the needs. It meets the needs and it's refreshed. So it's like a brand new building, even though some of the structure is old, it's 40 years old. I think the taxpayers would appreciate saving three and a half to $4 million. So if between these two options, I would rather be conservative and pick the lesser expensive option. Some be because I think the taxpayers care about how much money we're spending. So between those two options, I would rather see us to be hybrid. Tom, I, best route, maybe you do one-on-ones with commissioners, try to get a final, since there's no urgency in timing. Do you, is that the way you want to do this? On which direction or how do you want to do this on determining newer hybrid?
Um, I can, I can.
Well, I think there might be some more questions that come up that. Isn't that why we're meeting today though? Are we not trying to figure out a consensus right here as we sit?
Well, I mean, that would be ideal, but if we, if I'm going to, if you would like to talk privately about it.
I don't think we have to. I'm, I'm, I'm for the new build for the reasons that they said. I understand that, uh, if you're, you, I heard you say that if we do the hybrid, we're going to run into more problems here that are going to cost some money here in the future. So the, I, I understand $3 million is a difference, but if we're going to be spending $3 million over the next five to 10 years, because we, we're trying to makeshift an old building, then I, I guess.
Yeah. I, I miss, it's an important question. Um, you know, just the, and I've heard a number of things throughout the presentation day to talk about efficiency, but just the two lobbies. Uh, and Steve and I talked offline about this yesterday, but just the two lobbies and the staff, that's a hundred thousand a year from now and forever that you'd have to maintain and run. Um, now that's a 35-year payback on 3.5 million to your point. And then the question of, and the new model is clearly that we're going to bring in community to help these kids. To your point, Chairman, that is an intangible that you cannot fix a dollar sign to today, but if you can get better outcomes for that. And if you can avoid one disaster in the future because of those outcomes, that pales 3.5 million. I, I get the argument of the upfront cost and, and the here and now, but the, the key words to me were, you know, the safety component of this and the hallways and the extra lobby and, but it, it is a leap to justify 3.5 million more. But if you can show cost effectiveness over time through the additional staffing with the lobby and the potential better outcomes for kids. I think that maybe helps soften the blow to some degree. And we can't get that with the remodel. We can't, we have to have the two lobbies nowhere around the ingress egressors, no way to involve the community except with taking them into the licensed portion, which becomes a hassle then for the community and a hassle for the kids and a hassle for staff. I know that, I, I'm just trying to help.
I get it. I get it. May I ask a question? Why, why can't everybody enter through the, the larger new lobby and still access the residential dormitory area from the newer lobby? Why, why, why do you have to use the old lobby at all? It's an egress, but it doesn't need to be the entrance. Again, if you have a single entrance, why could you not use the new lobby as your, as your form of entry?
I would, I would just say that the juvenile residential facility is a 24-hour facility. So they have visitation all throughout the day.
Right. And people want to visit, need to go through the, the new entrance. Right. And people want to visit, need to go through the, the new entrance. That's the, the single entrance.
Then they would need to walk all the way around to the juvenile.
Yes, it's inconvenient, right? I don't care about that. Look, safety and security sometimes are not convenient.
If, if you're staffing that lobby that's all the way at the other end and there's a concern, a security issue that, that where's the closest person? It's going to be able to help the one single person that's in the lobby after hours.
After hours would be at the juvenile, emergency shelter.
Yeah, but I, I think what Commissioner How is saying is if we had one lobby, if we eliminated this lobby and you just had that one lobby that served the entire complex and the entire building. And you have one person staffing this after hours and there's a conflict or security issue there. You're dispatching staff that's in this building, that's running down this hallway, running down this hallway, running through the building to try to respond to them by the time they get the call.
Right. Correct.
I guess what I'm saying is I don't know that I, I'm actually, this has been thought, and you have a quick answer on my question. I don't know if it's been thought of because the way I asked the question, you guys were, it felt like I were scrambling for an answer here. My, my opinion is, is that if we, if we save a hundred thousand dollars a year by having one entrance and at night when there's not a lot of people visitors, that person doesn't need to be at that, doesn't need to be at the, at the visitor's entrance. That's a locked door, they push the button to get in. The guy goes down there and lets him in. But he's, he's not going to be sitting at the, the lobby where there's no one coming in and out. He'll be down there where the kids are. So, you know, I don't, again, I don't know if we're enough said. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Blue Ball, you can pop on anytime, Commissioner Wise, at any point in time. I think managers want to get some clarity. I'm for the new build. The, the reasons for the cost difference will have been justified to me. So I'm, I'm not, I have no, no qualms in that. I, I want, I want this right for these kids. In many ways.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Chairman. I, I want to look over the math a little bit more. My experience with this, a lot of times is it, I feel like projects I've been involved with in the past, a lot of times the remodel cost I have been exaggerated a little bit to push toward the new. I'm not saying that's the case here, but I've seen that a lot in the past. So I'll just, I want to take a harder look at the numbers.
And yeah, I pressed, I think quite a bit on construction numbers and how we get to numbers and asked a lot of questions when we did our meeting prior to this, but I think the reason, we call it a remodel, it's not really a remodel. It's a, a less of a build, right? So there's a $20 million build and there's a $16 million build because you're retaining. I don't know what the square footage currently is. Best practice, just with my experience in business has been if it's costing 75% of the replacement costs, we'll call it, that usually go for the replacement. I'm not sure. I, I'm a little bit indifferent because I don't want to come in and there's been a lot of work on the board ahead of me, so I don't want to backpedal that. So I'm really looking at you guys trusting that, you know, our kids are our future. I, I think Chairman and Commissioner Howe have said that, you know, it's really important to us that we're doing this the right way. We need to trust that that's the motivation here is if the new build creates more efficiencies, better service, better community engagement. I'm not sure three and a half million, you know, is gonna, it's going to be worth the money if that's the case. So we need to trust that those efficiencies are, are true and that the services will be better. We can't prove that today. So I just wanted to kind of clarify, that's why I'm leaning more towards the new build is we're not talking about a remodel cost. It's, we're, we're building a lot of building onto an old building. So I would look for efficiencies. I've asked about the facade on the outside or exterior. Are we doing brick or are we doing EPIS? I want to go with a cheaper option that looks nice. But the value engineering is important to me. So I think those are my only comments. I'm leaning towards that, that new build, but I really want us to sharpen our pencil and do it for a cost that's friendly to our taxpayers.
So based on some of those comments, Tom, would you be able to set up some one on one meetings to try to get some of these down? I don't think Commissioner Blue Ball is asking to see some more numbers and understand it better. And I want to honor that for him. See if we can't get something. We're going to move forward with projects. Now it's just a determination of the new build or the, or this hybrid model and what, and understanding that. So see if we can't get something turned around in the next two weeks.
I do want to make a comment just before we leave this discussion on estimates and build costs. These, these are, these don't come from staff. These come from architects and people in the industry. And I, a lot of times I'll look at a number and I'm like, holy cow, that's, it's so high. But we rely on the people that do that for, and I'll look to Tanya or Andrew to correct me from, when we look to the people outbuilding buildings currently and, and designing and architecting buildings currently, what they estimate cost will be so we can report back to the people. The numbers that we think are within a ballpark. So I, I just want to make sure that you understand this isn't staff creating something or concocting something behind a scene. This is us going to industry people and asking their opinion, all of which you guys can do too. We have a number of developers, number builders, number architects, good community people that, that watch these meetings and interact. So just want to set the record straight on that a little bit, that these are not staff numbers. These are design professionals' numbers that we tried to give back to the people. So.
Good to know. Appreciate it.
Okay. And I think that's, Tanya, anything else on fun?
No, if I can, I just, I will add on to that and Tom is absolutely correct. We go to our, the architects for these numbers who then will reach out to general contractors to get estimates and what they're seeing out in the field. So if we give you remodel numbers, if we give you new build numbers, those are numbers we're getting from the architects who are reaching out to general contractors on what they're seeing out in the field. And then I know that Commissioner Howe was asking about A and E fees. And I'll just comment that typically what we will budget for architectural and engineering fees are about 8%. And that's what we've typically used and that's pretty spot on for fees on projects. So just wanted to clarify.
I would just, the only thing I would add is I don't like to spend money and I don't, I'm very mindful of the fact that these are tax dollars every one of us pay and then all of our families and our neighbors pay. I also am wary about underbuilding to save a penny today. Because we know when we get into a building and we've underbuilt it, that whenever it reaches the end of its useful life, in other words, we've outgrown it within eight or 10 years. That staff is going to then for the next 10 to 15 years shoehorn programs the best they can into an inadequate facility space because there's going to be hesitancy to do anything to fix that. For the same reason, it's going to be costly. Do you remodel it? Do you expand it? Do you build new again? And you end up in a building that's inadequate for 15, 10, 15, 20 years with nothing changing. So there's a balance there and we're trying to, we, we tweaked the remodel multiple times with the architect. We, we worked the architect really hard to try to work out all the bugs to where it was the best it could be and would it really fit the needs for the next 15 to 20 years? And that's why we come in suggesting that a new build was probably the best solution. Mindful that it's expensive and we probably need, we need to, need to value engineer it to the greatest extent possible. But that's my final word on that.
Thank you for having me, Chairman.
I got one more, since I got them. I'd like an update on the corrections formula and what's going on with the state. There are some significant concerns about its impact on Sedgwick County and we've kind of set back from the commission side of things to make sure that we can be good, be civil in this discussion, but I think there's some anxiousness building from the commission about what the impact could be. And I'd like a little bit of an update so we know exactly what we need to do on our end to address this. What I believe to be an urgent and growing crisis that will be in Sedgwick County.
So for the, for the current year, which will start July 1st, we're at flat funding. The proposal is approximately a 50% cut starting next year. And we would absorb that over three years, so 33%. It's about two and between two and a half and $3 million cut in adult services. So we are with our last iteration of the funding formula, we sent a letter to the Secretary of Corrections and the Deputy Director to let them, Deputy Secretary to let them know appreciated the work that they've done to take some of our ideas into play, but it still would decimate the adult justice system in Sedgwick County if that formula went.
Steve, so the public is aware, this is the first time they're hearing it. This is a conversation we've been having for a little over a month here. As they're recasting a new formula that would be two years out, correct? 26 and 27 from the state. The results of that formula is that some communities like Johnson County will get an increase. Yet the community here in Sedgwick County that has significantly disproportionate needs will see a significant decrease and we will have to we will have to end some programming. It is just simply, I think it would be horrific for this community to end some of the program and we'd have to end because of this cut. So we've tried to be very diplomatic with this and allow the process to work itself out, but I'm just telling the public and you now, I'm not comfortable sitting back anymore. And I think I, I would like for the commission to put our foot on the gas a little bit and make sure the governor is aware that we are really, really frustrated with these discussions. So I'll yield to the timing of that, but I, I don't think the progress in these discussions is acceptable for this community. That I, I am deeply concerned and I think if Chief Sullivan and if I think if Sheriff Easter were aware of some of these discussions that were going on from the state about what could be coming, they would be definitely afraid of this too. So and Mark Bennett. I, I guess I'm yielding to figure out what we need to do. I mean, I, I'm leaning towards, I would not, Commissioner Howe and I spoke about this. I, I think if there's no change in this direction, I think we need a press conference. I think we need to alert the community here that what programming would be ending, Steve? I mean, what would you be ending or cutting back if, if this thing goes as they plan it to go?
We would just, so obviously we have to start planning for this. We can't sit back and, so we would it's about 21 staff. We would, we would cut behavioral health funding. So the state 10 years ago said, if you offer substance abuse, mental health treatment, behavior, BIP, Better's Intervention Program, which is licensed by the AG, which we do in-house, we'll give you extra money. So we've taken all those opportunities. So we have, we would cut all, that would all go away. That is ancillary to direct supervision of juvenile, adult offenders in this community. So that would go away. We would possibly look at closing the adult residential facility because we use some community corrections to shore up staff at that facility. So we would cut that. It's a different money, but that puts money back in the corrections budget. We would.
So it's cutting adult residential facility. What, what does that impact to this community?
The impact would be those folks would either not get a second chance or would not get an initial chance to be in the community and work and support their families. They would probably go straight to prison.
They'd still be in prison.
Yes.
Or in the county jail.
Or the county, or the county jail. The, the number of people who are not in the jail can go to adult residential.
How many people are we talking annually that that would? Your clients.
Three, four hundred.
Three, four hundred people. That would be either stay in prison, go to our jail or or not have any of these.
These people are all coming home. These are not people getting life sentences and never, these are, so if they can learn to live in the community, it's better for everybody. They pay taxes, they take care of their family and they learn to be productive. We meet with them, you budget with them, you help them learn how to pay their bills. So all that goes away.
We're basically out of time here. We need to go nuclear on this deal. I mean, we need to go big. And I think a press conference is minimum. I think we need to do that immediately.
Let's, yeah. First of all, Chairman, thanks for bringing this up. We have, when we originally talked about this a month ago, we reached out to lobbyists, to our lobbyist Jason Watkins, who is working behind the scenes with the, the governor's office, chief of staff. It sounded bad the first time I said it. So that conversation is still going on. I'm, I'm going to try to phrase this as delicately as I can. But I think that there is through our lobbyists talking to the governor's office, there is clear conflict of opinion within the state system.
Yeah.
This is unique to us because it is not necessarily, Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, but it is not a legislative issue. It is a budgeting issue within KDOC. They're not getting any more or less money into their budget because the legislature is not doing that. It is the money within their budget that they're reallocating, looking to reallocate to spend. That's why it's a unique problem for us politically.
Right.
So this is a staff level discussion yet between us and our state KDOC staffing partners and the governor's office. And there is clear conflict in this discussion right now. I would like to seek Jason's, and I, we have to trust the lobbyist's opinion on when to go public with this in a more formal setting where we put people on Zoom and we bring people into meetings and it may very well come to that. I, I agree with commissioners that this cannot, it's, it's a travesty what's being talked about. And Steve could talk even about how this committee formed and how, who had input and how the money, it's a travesty how that was done. That's our opinion on this. And so we're arguing that as vehemently as we can with our lobbyist, who is in turn vehemently arguing that with KDOC and the governor's office. And as soon as we get some guidance from Jason, then I think the commission has to probably go to the next step politically.
And I think the public has a right to know how this happened. I mean, there was a, in my opinion is Sedgwick County was underrepresented. Yes. And there was a taking of, of what's historically gone to Sedgwick County. We have the largest name in the state and they, and they defunded us because they could. And again, I know this is an executive branch action. However, the legislature can influence the executive branch if they need to. And then get, what I'm saying is when the legislative, when the legislative branch learns what hap, is happening and the effect this is going to have on our services. I think they can, they can add some language to stop or slow this down to, to reverse this temporarily. Whether it be a, a study group that has to do it differently or to, to suspend the action of this group. They can do something in a, in a proviso if they have to. This can be something we can get into a budget bill. The governor will sign it. And this will, this will stop the bleed. I think we need to do something nuclear. Again, we have the chance right now. I understand this is really not a legislative action, but we can use the legislature to stop the problem temporarily and I think the public has a right to know. Second of all, this is, do we have performance, do we have performance measured data to show the effectiveness of these programs and how that helps transition people back into the private sector?
Yes. Their state law requires us to measure successful outcomes. And they require 75% or 3% increase over year over year. We also have recidivism rates that we believe is a better measure of, once your case is closed, do you continue to commit crimes?
So there's a cost, there's a cost to not doing this. That's the same argument I made on GRBR, by the way, years ago. There's a cost to not doing this. And again, if this is one of those things where they want to not provide the, the funding to Sedgwick County, I don't know that I would even entertain the idea of not providing this program. I don't think that's the option. I think we have to provide the program because it saves taxpayer money. It reduces crime, it reduces victims. And it actually is, is the most conservative option you can possibly have on behalf of our taxpayers and our community is to have these programs. So that, no, not providing these services is not an option. But we're talking about tax dollars and prioritization within our budget. Are we willing to raise taxes? Are we willing to shift money within our budget? If we have to, to fund these programs through local property taxes, that's a good, that's a discussion we need to have. The legislature needs to understand. If they don't act, our choice is to you know, use property tax dollars or something that has been funded through the state. And again, they're, they're, they're pressuring us not to, not to raise our budget. At the same time, this is another one of those things where I don't, I don't think shutting this down ought to be even considered as an option. It just isn't important. We shouldn't have shut down GRBR years ago either, for the very same reasons. We're talking about spending $22 million today for a program that frankly was working. And now we're going to, you know, and then, and the, and the moment it was a million dollar boiler we were worried about. So we bulldozed the building. We lost our contract and our license. And has this been good for the community? Absolutely not. Now we're struggling with legislation, turning rest of, just a piece of what we had. I, I don't want to, I don't want to go backwards on this. These programs are too important. It's, it's just as important as our jail. It's just as important as our courts. It's just as important as our DA. This is part of how we deal with adult crime in our community. This is a, a critical piece of what we provide to, to this community and not doing this is not an option.
Okay. I, I know we, I truly believe personally that we have the best lobbyists walking around to become, I think they're fantastic. We have tried from the commission to be very diplomatic in this approach, so allow that process to work out. I just want, I please understand that, speaking for myself, I'm very, very nervous about this. So let's see if we can get an update from the Watkins Group. I think this anxiousness is building that if we wait, 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 that we're going to run out of some time. And I trust the lobbyists. I trust that group. I think they deliver for us time and time again, but I'm getting really uneasy about waiting because I understand the impact of this.
We have, we have presented this to our advisory board, who is represented by the judge. We have, we have presented this to our advisory board, who is represented by the judge, um, the district attorney's office, sheriff and WPD, and they all have a handout that I gave the commission to when we met. So they, they have that. They do know, but we've also asked them for the same thing is that, that our lobbyists would be working on this too. But so they have an awareness of it, but it's been going on so long, they might think it's over with.
The reference, the representative for WPD had asked me if we were ready for the chief to go go political. And we asked him to stand by while we worked through our lobbyists. I was talking to Steve about this yesterday, about next steps. And again, we were waiting, uh, Tanya, I think has an update from, uh, from our lobbyists, but um, what I told Steve was that we would probably wait to see what, what effect he had with the governor's office. Next steps might be on what you talked about is, is a direct conversation with the secretary from commission manager, manager's office with the secretary about our concerns, which include uh, the manner in which they're applying the statutes that apply to the funding formula. They, they appear to be using certain ones and ignoring others. And Steve has brought that to your attention and asked him to rectify that. And at this point, we believe that the, that the process for developing a formula is is so flawed that it can't be successful. Kind of think maybe a third party, uh, an independent third party coming in and reworking this thing from, from the bottom up would be a better solution, but that'd be a conversation with the secretary. Nonetheless, I'll let Tanya tell you what she got.
So, uh, last week I checked in with, um, Steve, and I know that there was a meeting of counties, I think last week. Um, and a letter was provided to, I think, the secretary, the deputy secretary of KDOC. So I got that to Jason and Jason met with, um, governor, uh, chief of staff last week and assured me that he had a conversation with him and that they are working on this, uh, to fix this. So that's, uh, what I can tell you as far as an update and I, I will, uh, continue to.
Please let him know, we feel like we're coming down to a, 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 a hard line that we have to, we're trying to be diplomatic. We understand the governor's office has said that they're working on it, but we, we need some progress. Okay. Thanks, Steve, Mario, everybody. Anything else? Okay. Think we're good. See everybody tomorrow.
Real quick, before we get up, we'd be offline, that's fine. We don't have staff next week. This is Mike Elper's last staff meeting.